We're trying. All right. Now I don't have to yell. So for tonight, we are going to address just the one issue. It's going to be whether the ballot question for a chief of police to be an appointed official under the city charter. I want to caution everybody that we want to keep this not personal on any level. This has to do with a charter change amendment, not personal attacks. I will stop in a heartbeat if we're going to start attacking citizens, council, or staff. I appreciate the turnout that we have. Haven't seen this at any council meeting in quite some time, but so. Each speaker, if you've signed up to speak, will be allowed three minutes. If everybody in here speaks, we might get out of here by 10:30, 11:00, or thereabouts. So we're going to try and hold that very tight. The two end lights will be lit up when your 30 seconds left. This light will come on red when your time is up. I would appreciate if we could hold to that. If you're speaking for a group of people, I will allow you a little extra time. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Brennan. And once again, I thank all of you for your attendance.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a little bit of housekeeping. There are agendas on the back of the, in the table in the back near the door. I think we ran out of them. They may be, we got them up there. Okay, so we printed some more. We actually ran out. I printed 50, so that wasn't enough. If you do want to address the council, you need to have signed one of these sign-in sheets. We have the first one up here. Amanda will be calling people in the order that they signed up to come to the podium and speak. All your comments will have to be from the podium. Please don't speak out from the audience. You can't be heard on the broadcast or the recording, so please only speak from the podium and into the microphone. Attached to the agenda is a little bit of background documentation about how we got here, why we're here today, and why the charter is as it is now. The first page behind the agenda itself is a summary of some public comments by a citizen who came to the council on March 6th and expressed concern about the police department morale and turnover, and asked that this charter question be placed on the ballot. That's a summary I prepared based on the videotape of that meeting. Below that is an excerpt from the official city council meeting minutes of that meeting. The next page with the yellow highlights is the two sections of the charter. The charter is, I don't know how many pages long, but quite a few. And these are the only two places it's referred to, who reports to who. It points out who the appointed officials are and spells out that the fire chief is a little kind of special animal. He's elected by the members of the volunteer fire department and affirmed by the council. And then on the very back page are a summary of public comments that were made in meetings in 2007 when this charter change was originally, when the 2008 charter change was originally being discussed. And they go both ways. People speaking in favor of having the police chief report to the city manager and to report to the mayor and council. So that's just kind of some background information. And I think Chief Paul Schultz has a few words to say about the current status of the police department, and then we'll begin calling names for the public comment.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and thank you, everybody in the audience, for joining us tonight. My presentation will probably take the full three minutes. I'll do my best to hold to that. I want to start off with, the world has changed a lot since the year 2000, and I think we realize that. And it's really changed a lot since 9/11. All of my references that I'm going to cite here are current studies, national studies done by very reputable institutions across the United States. And I will cite each of those, and I'll cite as far as what they are referenced to prior comments. I want to start off with a little bit about my background. I have 45 years law enforcement experience and 23 years of that as a chief of police in two states. I have a master's degree in criminal justice administration, and I teach criminal justice administration at several institutions around the country, including the Marine Corps Police Academy. I was police chief in Canyon City, and I got a call from one of your speakers who, at the time, was working for SIRS, the Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing Agency Insurance Company, and asked me if I would come to Fort Morgan to do a study on the police department. And I was glad to do that, and I didn't charge any money for that. And I do that once a year as a way to give back to the community. And I came here, and I wrote a report on some things that I thought could be improved. I've since done a total of three studies on the police department, interviewed every employee at least twice, some three times. And I was hired by the city manager to bring some of those ideas here, to modernize the department, to improve community policing, to make us the best in Colorado. To go from what I thought was a good police department to make it into a great police department, that was my challenge and my direction. We've been working towards that quite steadily. Right now, I'm very pleased to report that we did a citizen survey ongoing, and on a scale of one to five, with five the highest, community perceptions of our study, our survey, is 4.7, which is actually very, very good. My goal is to get that as close to five as we can. Crime is down in the first quarter of 2018. Community outreach is up. We now have 20 partnerships, especially in schools and our immigrant communities. We've won four awards in the last 17 months here at the police department. We won an award from one Morgan County, a Leadership Award, National Association of Town Watch as a national award winner, Fort Morgan Chamber of Commerce, a finalist for Citizen of the Year, that was for the entire police department, and Community Leader recognition by Colorado State University. We've been officially recognized by the International Association Chiefs of Police in 2017, where we presented in Washington, D.C., our community policing plan involving our community, our immigrant communities. We authored a publication on how to assess and improve operations of small law enforcement agencies. At the 2018 IACP conference on building trust in immigrant communities, we were the only agency invited from Colorado. We provided technical assistance in 2017 and 18 to five different police departments in our area. We've been very busy in that type of program. We represent 50 cities in Colorado on professional standards. We run that program. We just received a request from the state of Alaska to speak on how to assess and improve operations of police departments based on what we've done here in Fort Morgan. And I say "we," and I mean all the members of the department. I don't take credit for any of this. We just received a request from the International Association Chiefs of Police to host a national summit in Fort Morgan in July or August with 30 police chiefs from around the country on how we are working with and building trust in our immigrant community. So I think in those areas, we're doing a pretty good job. Improvements have been made in training, technology, grants, equipment. We've gotten $85,000 in grants in 17 months. We're about to institute a new software package called SmartForce, one of about 18 cities in the state. We take the lead on de-escalation training, trying to use words, not weapons. Use of force is down. Our goal is to be the best-trained police department in northeast Colorado. Our other goal is to have every supervisor and manager in the police department trained and certified by the FBI, and we're well on our way. We are ready to handle any public safety emergency. It was implied that we were not. We just completed a very large-scale tornado drill. We just investigated a meth lab, and just investigating, an ongoing investigation for an officer-involved shooting. All the positions that were open in the police department have been filled, with the exception of one, and that'll be filled Thursday. We are at full strength. Police department is at full strength. Now, we have what's called a training bubble. We have several officers that are in the pipeline, and we expect all of them to be out in the field in September, with the exception of the one that'll be hired Thursday. I want to talk about turnover. It's officially called attrition. The new norm in policing is 15% turnover. 15% turnover equates to 4.2 officers a year in the police department. That's exactly what we lost, the exact national average. And I have all kinds of documentation to show that. National studies. Every city that I'm aware of has experienced this level of turnover, especially in our part of the state. We had four officers retire. 34 years, 28 years, 27 years, 25 years. Yes, I will acknowledge that all got second jobs. That's called double-dipping, and that happens everywhere in the United States. One officer died off duty. Two officers relocated, and they were commuting 160 miles a day to work. One officer resigned before I started. I shook his hand as he left on my first day on the job. One officer just left to join a metro police department. He got a $22,000 a year raise the day he started. The studies that I want to quote to you show that salary is the number-one reason police officers resign. Law enforcement retention study from the North Carolina Department of Justice dated 2016. Salary gripes are top reason employees quit from the Society of Human Resource Management, dated 2014. I have three others, but save some time. There was a comment about officers don't seem happy. I have a study from the Pew Institute from 2017 that says, "One out of five officers nationally are not happy because this is tough times for all the reasons that we see on national news every night." Since 1984, 112 employees have left the police department. Since 2000, 52 officers have left the police department. This has been going on long before I came to Fort Morgan. My goal is to turn that around, and I think we can. We've been working with HR, and I think we have a way to make this improve. The future here is very bright. That's the point I wanted to comment on. Yes, we have addressed some tough issues, but I think we are on the road to being very, very successful. We're hiring local people who want to stay here, people who want to work at our department, and our reputation right now is stellar in the community as far as officers wanting to come to work here. The applicants we interview tell us we want to join Fort Morgan because of what we're doing here with community policing, community outreach, and that is very, very exciting for us. Morale here is no worse than any other police department in Colorado. What we have, I don't think we have a morale problem. What we have is frustration. We have people that are frustrated because we did lose some officers. We do have a pay issue that we're working on. So to wrap all this up, I would ask you to leave politics out of the police department, leave the structure as is. Let us be independent. We have been and will continue to do the right thing based on best practices. As far as me personally, our structure, there was some discussion about our title, my title, Director of Public Safety, and I'm here to tell you that the Longmont Police Department has the same program. There was a comment, referenced New York City Police as far as percentages of officers leave. Interesting to note, the New York City Police Department, the police commissioner, is a civilian employee, just like here. I have found six cities in Illinois that have the same structure that we do. What we have here is nothing out of the ordinary. My involvement with morale, I spend over $1,000 a year, my own money, to do everything I can to improve morale. We have barbecues. We buy Rockies tickets for employees who want to go there. We do a lot of things. We're about to enter a bowl-a-thon, potluck dinners. I buy sports drinks in the summers for every officer when it's hot. 300 bottles last year. I pay for that. I'm glad to do it. I don't want any recognition for it. That's how much I care for our people here. We're trying to build a team, and I think we're well on our way to do that. So with that, I'm going to close. Again, I ask you, please leave things as they are. I think they're working. I think we're on a road to a very good situation. Our goal, again, is to be the best police department in northeast Colorado, and I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan, you want to start calling, or Andy?
Yeah, so I'm going to apologize in advance for those names that I mess up. Dan Keough is the first person to speak.
That was perfect. Thank you. Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and address your body. By way of introduction, my name is Dan Keough. I'm a retired police chief. I retired from the Edgewater Police Department in 2011. If you're not familiar with Edgewater, it's a small municipality in the metro area that's contiguous to Denver, Wheat Ridge, and Lakewood. I wanted to say a few things about Chief Schultz, and I guess before I do that, I want to also add that I, upon my retirement, I also took another job, and one of my businesses' endeavors was to be an independent contractor for SIRS, your insurance carrier, where I traveled throughout the state and investigated just about anything that I was assigned to do involving different departments, police and fire, elected officials. And so I've had a lot of exposure, you know, after retirement to different departments in the state. Your manager called me a couple of years ago and was referred to me by SIRS saying that there were some issues with the police department, and he wanted an assessment. We talked briefly about what was going on, and really, that's not my forte specifically. And so I referred him to Paul Schultz, who, at the time, was the chief in Canyon City. And I just want to let you know that I've known Paul for probably about 20 years through work, through the State Chiefs Association. He's been a mentor of mine personally as a chief, and also a mentor to other chiefs throughout the state. He's on the small-agency team for the State Chiefs Association, and on the small-agency team for the International Chiefs Association, where he's a resource for chiefs throughout the nation that have problems, issues, questions, anything of that nature, where they need an outside resource. And I just want you to know that to have that person as the chief of your department is really an incredible resource when you look at it. It's incredible, you know, almost an honor to have a person of that position leading your department when you're looking, when you look at different agencies nationwide. Come to him for advice. I see my 30-second lights on, so I just want to say really quick, I've worked under both a strong mayor and a city manager, former government that changed two years before my retirement. I just find that the manager, answering to a manager is much more efficient, streamlined, and definitely less political, and it ensures continuity among different administrations and councils and mayors as you go forward. Thank you again for the opportunity to address you. Thank you.
Thank you. I will remind everybody, this is not a personal reference for Jeff Wells, Paul Schultz, or this. This is about the charter change, and I would appreciate if we keep it to that topic.
Brenda Valdez. Just as a quick introduction, my name is Brenda Valdez. Public speaking is not my forte, so I'm just going to read from my Mac, okay?
City council members, I'm here today to ask that the charter of Fort Morgan remain as a city manager charter. Mayor and council charters are not appropriate for Fort Morgan and its unique community needs. In a city that is 48% white, 44% Hispanic, and 6% black, community building specifically, community policing, as Chief Schultz has demonstrated, is more important than ever. Chief Schultz has made commendable efforts in his last 16 months serving the police department and diversifying the growing police force here. If the role and decisions of police chief falls under the power of mayor, there is potential for political biases that could influence such decisions. Keeping politics out of our police department by continuing a city manager charter ensures a fair and unbiased approach to policymaking and decision-making for both the council and police department. If there is concern about turnover rate of police officers, the initial response should interrogate why police officers decide to leave the police department in the first place. These cases surely should be considered case by case and not placing all decision-making power under the jurisdiction of a strong mayor or council and mayor. It would not address these concerns as efficiently as other approaches. While there is no question that there are improvements to be made in Fort Morgan, giving full power over to a mayor will not solve these issues in question brought forth at the March 6th meeting. We are here asking city council to recognize the importance of team effort in improving the well-being of all residents in Morgan County. Chief Schultz has shown that he is invested in meeting specific needs for our community. And in this situation, it's important to ensure that power and voice are spread across many different sectors and not specifically under the jurisdiction of one authority.
I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to speak on behalf of a small group that is my family. Unfortunately, some of them couldn't make it here today, so we got together and we discussed the topic, and we came to the conclusion that we feel like that there's no need to change the charter. We feel that the current police chief has done a great job in the community, community outreach, or community policing. We've seen a great difference in our community since then, and I thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Farah Karsh, and I'm a student at Fort Morgan High School. I am here to talk about why I appreciate the Fort Morgan Police Department. First and foremost, I'd like to commemorate the police department for a job well done for keeping us safe throughout the years. Secondly, I believe that the current police department got all it done in the last year, such as how the officers in this town are socially involved and how people like me feel involved and safe. And I'd also like to include that I am also interested in the cadet program at the police department, and that is due to the fact that the community outreach of the police department is helping people like me feel confident or also, in a way, feel great about the fact that our police department is a great one. And if I do ever become a police officer, I'd be the first Somali police officer in the state. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Leslie Bundy.
I'm Leslie Bundy, Colorado native, retired police officer, 27 years on the job, out of state. I've been here 18 years. I'm here to challenge the arguments in favor of changing the city charter, the arguments found in a letter to the editor. I'm opposed to the change. First of all, employee turnover and loss of institutional knowledge. Today's workforce is mobile nationwide, affecting employee retention in all areas of employment. Essential knowledge held by existing employees can be identified, documented, and made part of training. For non-critical knowledge, contact a retired employee. Turnover of police chiefs. According to the National Association of Chiefs of Police, national average is approximately five years. Officer turnover, true of almost all departments. Some aren't cut out for police work, some want more money, some find this city too small for career advancement. There are nationwide trends, these are nationwide trends, have nothing to do with who a police chief reports to. Unhappiness and morale. I think you're responsible for your own morale. Is the real issue just resistance to change? Successful people embrace change and find opportunity in it. I'm going to quote Sergeant Steve Brown, I found this on the police department website. "Change is not only necessary to life, it is life." Change here was necessary so we went outside to hire a chief. The changes reflect the fact that we are in the second decade of the 21st century. I say, "Let's get with the program." Right to work. Yes, the chief can be fired at will by one person. This is a right-to-work state. We don't have a civil service commission to appeal to. I think any chief here will know that when he takes the job. Council can give a wider range of viewpoints. No, I think that's referred to as micromanagement, in this case, by four council members and a mayor. Council can discuss their points of view with a city manager, and hopefully reach a consensus. The city manager then can work with the chief to implement whatever needs to be implemented, keep in mind the effect on other departments. Follow a protocol. The chief and city manager, full-time, well-educated, experienced professionals. Council is part-time. They have full-time jobs and expertise in areas that are other than law enforcement. They have the responsibility of hiring a manager they can work with. Allow the manager and the chief to do their jobs. Keep the micromanagement and politics out of the PD. Unload it onto the shoulders of the city manager or the acting city manager. That's what he's there for. That's why he's called a manager. I see no need to change the charter.
My name's Jack Hart. I'd like to talk to three issues. One, the police department here and community policing. Second, the city manager system. And third, the potential of politicizing, danger of politicizing. In regards to the police department here, I have noticed with the I have noticed with the current chief that we've, the community policing here, I think has been a wonderful success. I encounter the police officers more, and I encounter them in very positive ways that are building community rather than just trying to prevent one crime here, one crime another. But I've also encountered them when they're dealing with fairly complex crime issues, like the drug bust across from my church this last week. What I've read about community policing and a report on television just three weeks ago indicated community policing across the country has been key since 1990 for the crime rates going down. So I completely support community policing. I think that the partnerships are great. I've encountered the police, be it at our church, or, or at the pop-up center, or at schools, and I've encountered more police on the streets. I enjoyed working with the previous Chief of Police also. Okay. So, the second area is the City Manager system. I have been involved in cities in Colorado, New York, California, and Brazil. I think for a city this size, the City Manager system is much more efficient in regards to administering. My wife was the Secretary of Health in a city just exactly this size in Brazil. Now, I know we don't have a Secretary of Health that's administered by the city, at least I don't think we do, do we? No. Take a little side issue here. I've lived in Fort Morgan for five years, but my family moved to Colorado in the 1860s. And I have lived in New York, Colorado, California, Africa, and Brazil. So in this town, Cabrangula in Brazil, as Secretary of Health, the situation was very much politicized in dealing with the City Council and the Chief of Police. And the, they wanted her to give half of the money that she had for prescription drugs to them. And she wouldn't do it. So that led to some big conflicts. Now, I don't expect that would be happening here, but politicization can be subtle in different ways. And I think that administratively, having a City Manager is a, is working. It's working here, and I think it's great for a city system. Okay. My three minutes are up.
Thank you, Jack.
Azalia Gayton.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Azalia. I'm one of the first interns at the Fort Morgan Police Department. I live in Sterling, so I came all the way over here, you know, to be here to support not putting this on the ballot. Sorry, I'm not used to talking. So, to address low morale, I did a lot of ride-alongs with the police officers, and we did stop and like talk to kids coming out of school, people just checking up on them, you know. If their dog was hanging out the window, we'd tell them to put them back in their car. I think they're doing a really great job. They, Chief, started the internship, which I think is a really great thing for students like us that do want to go into the criminal justice field. We get to understand everything and see if it's really what we want to do. Like he said, we also did the surveys, and I did talk to a lot of people, and most of them just were really happy that we were talking to them and just getting their views on everything that the police officers do. So, I just think everything should stay the same right now because there is some progress, it's just moving slowly. Thank you.
Russell Hickman.
Good evening. My name is Russ, I don't need this. When you, when you speak the truth, you don't need notes. My name is Russell Hickman. I have some similarities to a few of the prior speakers. I come from a small town, you may know, it's Chicago. And that's where my career started. And I too have worked for some small agencies, such as Chicago, Palm Beach County, and Orlando, and now Uncle Sam. And, but why I'm here is not to represent my agency, but to represent impartial and fair law enforcement. With two-thirds of my 42-year career being in administration or command, and being a staff inspector, and I'm now in foreign service. I just got back recently from a 49-month tour in the Caribbean, where I was based out of an embassy in Jamaica. And my, my function there was to investigate corruption and smuggling. Now, one may ask, what does corruption have to do with Fort Morgan or Colorado? One of the things that being overseas has revealed is the similarity between some small to mid-sized communities that have too much political involvement, it causes in a breeding ground, not always successful, but for corruption. And corruption comes in many various forms. I met Paul Schultz, and I'm not going to be, you know, here on behalf of Paul Schultz, but I'm here on behalf of an issue when he was down in Canyon City. I'm an FOP president down there with members from six various agencies from Colorado Springs down to West Cliff. I represent cops when I'm available. And one of the things we do is, we don't just represent them when they're in trouble, but we also represent them when we feel there's a need to isolate and remove them from aggressive or excessive political influence. As a former member of the Chiefs Association in Florida, and as a director of my current position, I have found that when you have a city such as Fort Morgan, which is very diverse, it's a lot larger than what I thought it was, a step backwards of any kind is no good. I was sitting in my office in the federal building, and I was talking to another chief, and he said, do you hear what's going on up at Fort Morgan? They're talking about going to a Strong Mayoral form of government instead of City Manager. I contacted Schultz and asked him if I could come up here and say a few words, and that is this. No need to even go to a referendum. You have a diverse community, council owes it to the people of the community, and it's, and the minority groups or various ethnic groups, and most importantly to the members of the thin blue line to keep politics out of law enforcement. And the best way to do that is to keep a Strong City Manager form of government. Thank you for your time.
Gloria Mosqueta.
Hi, my name is Gloria Mosqueta, and I'm not good at speaking, so, but I'm just going to make it just plain and simple. I'm here to say that I think we should just leave things the way they are. That I'm, a few of my friends back there, they stayed back there, but we feel that things are running smooth the way they are. I mean, our Chief of Police, he's great. They, sorry, I wonder, I get nervous. But he's great. I think the community outreach that he's done with Fort Morgan since he's been here has been great. I've, don't think I've, have met so many cops and have, have seen so much police involvement since he's come in. I don't know why I hadn't noticed it before, maybe it hadn't been done before, but since he's been here, I mean, before, I don't think we even, I don't even know if we had a Chief of Police. I don't know, just because we've never, I've never seen that outreach, the community involvement or anything. And I think it has to do with him being here and just, you know, if we can continue to leave things the way they are, and him continue to do his job the way it should be, and I, I don't know. I feel that we should just leave things the way they are. His involvement, his community outreach, and everything that, that's going the way it is, I think it's going good. But that's me. And another thing that I wanted to add is that thanks to all the community outreach that the Police Department has made, my son wants to be a cop when he grows up. And I think it's really neat because, you know, when they're little, they just don't know what they want to do. And I had the opportunity to introduce him to a few of the police officers at the, what is it, Coffee and Meet the Cop thing. And he thought it was the neatest thing he's ever been to. And ever since then, he's like, wants, he's always hoping that someone will pull his over just so that he can ask them questions about their jobs, okay? So I think that, you know, because of the community outreach that we've had, it's just made a really, you know, a positive impact in my son's life. So, I'm hoping that things just stay the way they are, and we'll see. That's my opinion, and that's what my friends back there wanted me to tell you too. Okay? Thank you.
You could help your son with that.
No, I, I try not to, okay? Thank you.
Eric Shawada.
Good evening. I'm not a resident, but I'm a professor at Colorado State University. And I'm a professional in looking at immigrant and refugee communities, or communities, specifically rural communities, that are dealing with a demographic transformation. And it's really been the honor of my career to be alongside Fort Morgan as it's grown into what is, we can say definitively as the most diverse community in, in the state of Colorado. And I'm really, my heart is warm to hear the ways in which the people speaking before me have been talking about and really bringing the voices of the immigrant community to the fore. I want to just provide context. I'm not here to provide any political opinions, but just context. So, here's facts. So, 19% of Fort Morgan residents are foreign-born. This is the second-largest percentage in the state, following only Aurora, which is 19.2%. 39% of the households in the town speak a language other than English, which is the highest percentage in the entire state. 43.3% of your residents are, identify as Hispanic or Latino. 6.1% identify as Black or African. When you put this together, that means that 49% of your community are residents of color, with 48% being white, meaning that Fort Morgan is now a majority-minority town, that people of color outnumber white residents in, in the town. That's, that's a, it's like almost 50/50, though. It changes, though, when we look at the youth. And so, Morgan RE3, 61% of the students in the school district identify as Hispanic, 4% identify as Black or African. That's 65% of the school district identifies as students of color. In the high school, it's 67%. The middle school and, the middle school and Columbine are both 62%, but then Pioneer Elementary is 79.3% students of color. So, the future of Fort Morgan is, is looking more brown and black. And the other thing I'd just add for City Council members, every year, Fort Morgan High School is graduating about 250 students who identify as being Latino or African, and in a position where 300 votes can win seats. I think it pays, it's worthwhile to pay attention to the concerns of some of these community members. My job is just to sort of go through this data and to tell stories. And because of the stories that I've been telling, some other elements have been coming into town. These elements are the Colorado Trust, the Colorado Health Foundation, the Center for Health Progress, and the Latino Community Foundation of Colorado. All told, they're going to invest about $3 million in the next 10 years. And they're drawn here because they're impressed with the ways in which Fort Morgan is handling this transition. They asked me, we see change going on in the schools, in the health system, in the business sector. They asked me, what's the city doing? And there's not a lot that I can really point to, but the one place I can point to is the current work with community policing at the Fort Morgan Police Department. And you have a real opportunity here to establish best practices rather than chase best practices. And so, for those reasons, I, I think it makes sense to listen to the community members that spoke before me. Thank you.
Phil Moss.
Hello. Yeah, pull this up. So, I'm, I'm here to support no change, and I'm also here because the Cavs and the Warriors aren't playing tonight. So, I'm the Regional Operations Director for Centennial Mental Health, so I come with a little different angle perhaps than some of the others. I've been with Centennial for nine years now. For eight years, I spent overseeing and developing the Emergency Response Team for Behavioral Health for 10 counties in northeastern Colorado. I left for a little while. I was recruited away and actually was in Canyon City when Paul was there. But a little over a year ago, I came back into a position that I'm in now, overseeing Morgan, Washington, Yuma County. And within about a month of moving here, my wife and I are, for, we've been married 41 years, we moved from Aurora two weeks ago to Fort Morgan. We're finally empty nesters. And basically, Paul came to me a year ago and said, hey, I'd like to form a partnership or collaborative relationship with the Mental Health Center. And one of the concepts he presented to me was the talk first before you shoot. And we are working on a partnership, just one of the numerous things we're talking about, to work as a consultant with the Police Department for those situations where individuals might barricade themselves in a home or be out of control, and we can offer some of the expertise that we bring with psychology. We, in turn, are partnering with the Police Department to reduce the number of individuals who end up in the emergency room. We've got a collaborative sort of relationship where they, when we have individuals with mental illness who are perhaps out of control, maybe either psychotic, maybe they're high or intoxicated, that they might be able to bring them directly to our office. So, I've worked with law enforcement agencies for nine years in northeastern Colorado, Sheriff's Departments, Police Departments. And it takes some special skill and training to have law enforcement officers who are able to work to help de-escalate individuals who might be agitated or anxious or upset. And so far, under this current leadership, we have experienced some excellent collaborative efforts with officers to work with those who are mentally ill. So, thank you for your time. I could have kept going on for a while.
Jack Darnell.
I'm Jack Darnell, and the first thing I want to tell you is, read the back there. So, I'm the first one to speak against this, what they've spoke about. And I have several reasons. Tonight isn't about who's doing what, it's about putting this on the ballot. To get, let the people decide. We have a few people here tonight, and I'm a little befounded because it looks like a stage to me. It's been put together, people have been asked to come to support somebody, and I feel a little uncomfortable with that, but I'm the one that's in, that's in the sights. That's okay. I think I'm doing the right thing. It takes courage to do that. Well, the first thing I want to do is thank the Council for taking the opportunity to listen to the people, and especially to thank Ron, Mayor Ron Shaver, Councilman Doug Schossel, and Councilman Clint Anderson, what appears to be their support in getting this on the ballot from previous discussions. One of the most protective rights we have in this country is the right to vote. And that's all we're asking for. I'm not up here to say who's doing what or anything else. Let the people decide. You have certain people here tonight, to me, I've already expressed my opinion on that. In the preamble, US Constitution, we the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general well- the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our prosperity." Do ordain, establish the Constitution of the United States. Again, give us the right to vote. That's what we want from you. We don't want to stand here and argue who's doing what or whatever. Just give us the right to vote. Let the people decide. Some of us here tonight is to ask council to put this on the ballot in November election on a charter change to have the police department chief appointed, hired, and fired by the council. I believe the council should let the people vote on the issue and the council should not make the decision by not putting it on the ballot, but by letting the people decide if they want to make this change or not. Why would you not let the people decide? There's a few people here tonight, this isn't the 12, 14,000 people in Fort Morgan, let the people decide. From your previous discussion, a couple of you expressed concern that you didn't know how to run a police department under the previous form of government known as the weak mayor form of government, not a strong mayor form of government, that some of your staff members have been saying in the paper. The city of Fort Morgan was well-served for approximately 110 years under the weak mayor council form of government. In light of issues that the city is going through at this time, it is more evident than ever as to why you need the mayor council over the police department. The second reason that a couple of you expressed was the cost. However, staff used Polco to do a polling on the charter change, which can be influenced one way or another at a cost of approximately under $3,000. Another thing that I noticed was something that I had not seen before in 10 years on city council, the pushback from staff. Letters to the editor, the organization by staff to have citizens speak against the charter change. I'm, okay. It's quite obvious to me that the tail is wagging the dog in city government. Mayor and council members, we have a problem. The only way to solve this problem we find ourselves in at this time is there needs to be action taken by the mayor council. Through the most recent issues plaguing the city, we have a public trust violation. The public feels like they've been violated, whether it's true or not, perception is reality. And at some point, you're going to have to deal with this. To start this healing process, we need to put this issue on the ballot, whether it's passed or not, to show the citizens of Fort Morgan that this council is trying to help solve the perception of the issue because it will not go away.
Okay.
Unless, unless, um, some type of action is taken. It's like an open sore and they keep breaking the scab open. In conclusion, is the time up?
Yes.
Okay. Thank, okay. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Sitlali Carros?
Hello, I am Sitlali Carros. I am 16 years old. I'm an upcoming junior at Fort Morgan High School. I've been, I was born here in Fort Morgan and I, growing up and being raised here, I wasn't aware of all the bigotry that there has been in this town. But I have experienced some of it within our schools and within the community itself. I have also realized that recently, this bigotry has gone down. And we were so afraid of talking about bigotry back when I was growing up, but not anymore. I would like to quote one of my teachers that I had this year. He said, "I hate the word equality. Life is not about equality. People thinking everyone should be equal are stupid. In life, there are winners and losers. There are no participation awards. I myself treat students differently than others, although I wish we were all treated equally." He is absolutely right. Equality is treating everyone the same. This means if I work hard and do all my homework, I get an A. But the kid next to me, who is always gone and doesn't do anything, also gets an A. Equality and equity are two different things. Equity is treating everyone fairly, meaning the person who is always gone would deserve the grade they end up with, since they didn't put as much effort as I did. So, and that ties into my next point. There are thousands of families that were affected recently because, well, we all know why. There, according to the American Civil Liberty Union, otherwise known as ACLU, there are 41 million immigrants in the United States alone. The, what happened recently has affected many families and the police department reaching out to these families that have immigrants in their families and that have people who are from different countries in their families have really been treated nicely and it, we, I, if, I think I speak on behalf of the Latino community, that we appreciate everything that the police department has done recently. I urge you to think about our future, not what's happening right now, but about the future. There are many, many immigrants coming into the states illegally or legally, it doesn't matter. We're still growing and there's no need to change the charter in my conclusion. Just think about the future. Thank you.
Sue Boyet?
Hi, and, and thank you for, um, opening up, uh, the room to hear the voice of the community. We so appreciate that. Um, my name is Sue Boyet and I'm the coordinator for Fort Morgan Cultures United for Progress. Um, I work with a group of community members, um, who represent all of these folks, um, who are refugees, uh, immigrants, newcomers, also people who have lived in our community, um, their entire lives. Um, and I don't speak for any of them, um, because they have their own voices and they have strong voices. What I will speak to is the fact that, um, for the first time in a long time, I feel like we're seeing an environment in which these folks feel, um, safe and comfort, more comfortable to come out and share their voice. And I will say that I believe that Paul Schultz has a lot to do with that, um, since I've been working in community. He has reached out to us. We're seeing such, um, amazing change through community policing. We see, um, bridges being built between community. And I know this isn't about that 100%, but I think it's important to acknowledge it in our community. I think it's been a big and positive change. Um, and for that reason, I really am not a supporter of the, uh, the change in charter. Um, I feel like our current form of government is the most efficient and effective way to deal with the issues that we're facing as a community. Thank you.
Lauren Boyet?
Good evening, council and, um, fellow community members and mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to come up and address you all. Uh, maybe I should disagree with my own, other member of my household to make things more interesting, but that wouldn't be good for me. I also grew up in a small town, uh, like Russell, Chicago, and, uh, was very, um, familiar with living in an environment where people often looked different than I did. I've been working in Fort Morgan the last two years and the people that I work with look very differently than I do, many of them. Many of them speak very differently than I do, many of them pray very differently than I do. And I'm very proud to be here in this town and to see such an incredible, um, diverse group of people and recognize the value that they bring to this community. In the past two years, uh, working as I have, this is my personal opinion, um, I have dealt directly with the police department, um, and they have been extremely responsive and receptive to hearing voices that don't necessarily reflect, um, what has traditionally been a larger group. I, I, I find that the police, the current police department is, uh, very willing to put themselves out there and to welcome, um, the other voices. And therefore, my grandmother has told me many times, if something is working, why would you mess with it? Uh, I think something is working here. I think that, um, this is a wonderful community and I do not support a charter change. Thank you so much.
Jessica Vargas?
Hello, my name's Jessica Vargas. Um, I do not support a change, a change in the charter. I believe the police department is good the way it is right now. There has been change in the last year. Police are more friendly and engaged with the whole community. They make everyone feel welcome. All the ethnicities, um, they take into consideration, like for example, the Somali people don't eat, um, pork and they have different kinds of meats, like turkey and the barbecues. And that's really nice because, um, it makes everyone feel welcome. Like before, honestly, I wasn't really, I'd say involved with the police department because I just didn't really see them around. Like I saw them around, but like they wouldn't really talk to people. And now I see like with this chief that we have, that they do that. Um, also I took a class with the chief and, um, I'm an intern with the department right now and I see how involved they are with the community with like one Morgan County or the pop-up center, um, the Sarah House. So I think things should just be left like how they are right now. Thank you.
Lynn Deal?
My name, excuse me, my name is Lynn Deal. And I'm here to support the charter change to put the police department back under the authority of the manager and council. My main reasons, and this is not to change, this is not about changing the whole charter with all the employees. This is just the police department. And these are my reasons. If an officer is intimidated or fired by the police chief or manager, he or she can appeal their case to the mayor and council, which gives the officers an additional layer of protection and security. The officers have made it clear themselves why they want it to change. They've made it clear to several city officials. This isn't not about, um, police relationship with the citizens at all. This is about how the police are treated by the manager and the city, the chief. My observance, a, a change in charter does not mean that we're going to throw out all the positive things that are put in place, the policies, the relationship, all the programs. It's not about throwing all that out. It's, it's, um, my observance of the events this last couple of weeks made it clear to me why we needed to have a change. I think we need to have the council more aware of the personnel and the problems within the department directly. It's not about, you know, the larger issues. One of the concerns of the council was expressed, there's no, they have no knowledge about hiring a police chief. The council has the entire CML at their fingertips with expertise on issues of all city government. No one who serves on the city council has a degree in city government. You have to dig in and learn. This is no different than the work that it takes to hire a manager to run the entire city. That's a huge job and that's what you do. This is no, this is just another employee that has a huge responsibility. So that's my opinion on that. I have recently heard from several other current city employees, all from different departments, who have cooperated with the police officer's complaint of the city managers' and chief management style, which is, it's my way or the by-way. During this last year, we have lost a couple of highly qualified city employees in other departments for their job, for other jobs. One who I personally worked with for several years expressed his real reason for leaving. His choice was the by-way. I have served on this council several years ago with the city manager. He was always very knowledgeable, very congenial and accommodating, and he builds a strong bond and loyalty with the council. However, if you're not careful, thank you for yourself, he will also do your thinking for you. I have also worked with him during recent years and even though he has always been extremely kind to me, if you dare to strongly disagree with you, he is very capable of playing hardball and will try to strike you out of the game. Most recently, I've read in a letter to the editor, the city manager, using his professional skills as an attorney to present his arguments for not changing the charter. And now you are hearing the concerns of all of us citizens. You will have to decide where your loyalties will be, either to the city manager or the citizens of Fort Morgan who voted in you into office to represent us. We are not asking you to make the decision to change the charter. We are asking you to provide us with the right to vote on the issue of the charter change. Thank you.
Thank you.
And my heart goes out to all of you with your huge decisions that you have to make for our employees, our manager, his family, and the entire community. I, I deeply care about all of you.
Thank you.
Kevin Campbell?
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Kevin Campbell. I am a resident of Fort Morgan. I'm also a patrol sergeant with the Fort Morgan Police Department. My badge number is 212. I have served the people of Fort Morgan since July 2015. Previous to that, I was with the Morgan County Sheriff's Office from 2009 to 2015. That's nine years as a peace officer and all of it has been in the service of Morgan Poor morale and turnover are among the reasons cited for making this council change. Now, it would be inappropriate for me to specifically discuss morale and turnover in a public forum. I think that kind of amounts to gossip. But I will say that the supervision and the city manager style of government is just not the cause of our morale problems. So I do not support this change whatsoever. And I would ask council that if this change is so desired, the proponents of this change should petition and gather signatures and place this issue on the ballot by that avenue. We've talked about political interference. Now, I do not fear political interference from any member of this council. I don't know most of you particularly well, however, I feel confident in saying that I don't think any of you would interfere with my job, but this council, this body will not be in office forever. Unscrupulous politicians can happen anywhere, so they can certainly happen here. That's why we want this shield of political, shield from political interference that this style of government affords us. It protects the officers, it protects the department at large, and therefore, and most importantly, it protects the people of Fort Morgan. I foresee a major bureaucratic bottleneck with this proposal. This proposal will only remove the PD from the city manager's supervision, so the manager will continue to supervise the other departments. Now, as one example, when budget time comes around, does that mean the police chief has to bring his budget to the council? They have to agree on that and then, Your Honor, you're shaking your head no, so perhaps I'm mistaken on that.
You're fine.
Perhaps I'll, uh, skip ahead. But, uh, the current, uh, form of political, uh, the current form of government provides a shield that prevents political interference from the chief and his department. This cannot go away. Currently, no officer should fear taking righteous enforcement action from a parking ticket all the way up to custodial arrest against anyone. No council member, in unscrupulous, and like I said, this doesn't apply to anyone here, would, could attempt to do that under the city form of government. So I would appreciate it if we could simply keep things the way that they are. Thank you.
Just quickly to answer your question.
Yes, sir.
The police department is under the general fund, so they would work in conjunction with the city manager to develop that.
Thank you for addressing that particular.
It would be like the fire department and that, all the departments would come in, but.
Well, that would be one concern put to rest and thank you for doing that.
Yes, sir. It is. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Earl Davison?
Good evening, mayor and council. It's a pleasure to get to speak to you tonight. I was, spent 38 and a half years with the Fort Morgan Police Department, 20 years as chief. I, I served with Homer Morris, who was chief of police, about 20 years, and Gail Davie, who's been. and Gail Davey, who spent twenty-five years with the police department. And I think he had about eighteen years as chief before he retired after twenty-five years of service. So, we both had, all three of us have had lengthy services, chiefs of police, and we all supported the mayor-council concept. I was very active in Colorado Association Chief of Police. I was very active with them and got to know most of the chiefs of police in Colorado. And most of the chiefs that I talked to were very supportive of me reporting mayor and council, and a lot of them are very envious of that. So, I like the concept of that because I talked to many chiefs that lost their jobs with the mayor, with the city manager type of situation, where a city manager come in and relieved the chief of police because he wanted to bring his own people in. I had one incident where a city manager come in, and he talked to the chief of police just before he went on vacation, and said everything was going okay. When he come back, he had a pink slip. He wanted to bring his own people in. So, I think, I'm not going to carry a lot more of your time, but I am very supportive of the mayor and city council hiring and the chief of police reporting for them. Thank you for your time.
Alberta Simmons.
Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm Alberta Simmons. I'm a former city employee of thirty-four years, having worked my last seventeen years in the finance and payroll department. I also am a former council member, having served from the year 2000 to 2010. I have worked under both, both of the charters. I am in favor of changing the charter, and for this reason. I'm hearing a lot tonight of people that are concerned that the police department is going to change, that we're not going to deal with our diversity, we're not going to have all these programs out there. This has nothing to do, the charter change, with changing these issues. The charter change is basically who the police department and police chief answer to, and that's the council. Having been a former council member, we need to know that our personal feelings at that point do not count. We are representing our constituents out there that voted for us and were to answer for them. My concern at this point is that the public is talking out there about the stuff that has gone out. And my question to you as a council, were you all aware of everything that had happened? So, my concern is, is that when I was under, when I was on the council, even after the charter changed, the police chief always informed the council as to what was going on. And so, all I want to do is remind you, we are a municipality out there. We are a small city. We're a great city, and we still need to continue to be that. And we need to realize that the citizens of Fort Morgan are the ones we need to listen to. Thank you.
Mohammed Mohammed.
The city mayor, the council, the chief, all protocol is observed. My name is Mohammed, and I am immigrant. It's my pleasure today to be here to talk about the changing of the charter. So, according to me, things is becoming good. I came to Fort Morgan 2013, and I've been living here for five years. Regarding to my observation, things are becoming good, and there is coexistence. People of different origin are living in Fort Morgan coherently, without problem. I'm coming from Somali community in the town or in the city. Many of us now live in this town decisively compared to other cities. Like Denver, life is not like this. When I go to Denver, I feel like staying in Fort Morgan because I feel peace and, you know, acceptance. We are also taxpayers. Group, majority of us work with Haggil, and we are, you know, we get, we pay tax that is helping the city, the development of the city. So, we are also running small stores in the town. We are small businesses that also pay tax to the, to the city. So, with me, according, according to my personal observation, I can say things are running well, and it has to stay the way it is. We are going to get a lot of progress. Many of us are becoming American citizen, and soon we are going to run for even city council. Thank you very much.
Rebecca Young.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if you'll excuse me, I'm not feeling very well.
Sorry to hear that.
You need help, Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council. My name is Rebecca Young. I've been a nurse for over thirty-three years. I came to Fort Morgan eight years ago because of my own health issues. Was only going to stay six months, and here I am, eight years later. Never lived in a small town before, and it certainly has grown on me. How I learn is to make myself aware of what the issues are. And a large part, the reason that I came to the forum today was to educate myself, to figure out what are the issues. And I haven't been able to do that to my satisfaction tonight. I also, you know, look at the paper as another source for educating myself. And again, wasn't able to get a lot of information. What I can say is that I don't think our resources, our very scarce resources, need to be put towards looking at a change when I am overwhelmingly hearing tonight, at least, that a change is not needed. Lauren took away my statement. My mother, a very, very wise woman, always said, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." And I am, I am starting back in my nursing. And I recently had a gentleman struggling with dementia, and I needed some help and advice. And what I can say is I reached out to the police department, and they were absolutely there to give me counsel. And I appreciated that because this, as an advocate for this gentleman, I, I wanted to help him. So, I'm going to ask the council and the mayor to be prudent and to utilize resources wisely. And we all know ballot issues are expensive, and we need to be careful about how we use our resources. Thank you for the opportunity.
Jared Crowe. You're going to pass. Lauren.
Good evening. I come here, I'm a police officer, been a police officer with the city of Fort Morgan now for twenty-four years. This coming Friday will be my, start of my twenty-fifth year. But I, I come from a different perspective. I'm also on the school board, and I want to try to draw, draw a parallel to what I think is happening here between the school board and, and this charter change. That is, as a school board member, I, I look at that similar to the city council member. My job is to oversee policy, fiscal issues. My job is not to manage the school. I think this, this form of government that we have now, this city manager form of government, is more effective and efficient. And when we look at the school board, superintendent would be the similar level as city manager, principal, be the chief, assistant principal, commander, and so forth. To, to really look at the, the proper efficiency and effectiveness of a department, I, as a school board member, would hate for the superintendent, as you know, we may have just, you may know, we just hired a new superintendent. If a new superintendent came in and said, "We want to take the biggest school district, or biggest school within the district, and make them answer to you as a school board member," I would not want that. If all of a sudden the high school became my responsibility, and I had the principal or the assistant principal coming to me saying, "Hey, we want to buy a new curriculum, what do you think?" I am not the person to make that decision. That's why we have a superintendent. That's why we have somebody who not only looks at the issue from, from the perspective of what's best for the high school, but what's best all around. And when we start looking at, at the curriculum in first grade, and second grade, and third grade, it all has to be congruent when you get to the high school. If we start having the high school principal making a decision what's best for what they believe is best for the high school, and that's not how it's been taught all the way through, we have a failure. And that's what the city manager does. City manager is able to look at the big picture for the city and put it all together in one piece. And, and that's where I think it's much more effective. Secondly, I don't think this is an issue of charter. I think this is a policy issue. If, I've heard people say that the chief of police or the, the city manager may be too strong, whatever. If that's the concern of the city council, you can change a policy. You can make the city, the police chief, answer directly, not directly to the city council, but, but speak to the city manager and have a five minutes at your meeting like we used to do. You can have the city manager report to you on everything that's happening in the city, in the police department, if you want to. That doesn't take a city charter change. That just takes a policy change on your behalf. So, I, I think it's unnecessary. I think it's ineffective, and I think it's inefficient. And that's why school districts run that type of a government, and that's the most effective in this, as well.
Thank you, Lauren.
Tyler Holt.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Tyler Holt. So, do we want one person to make decisions over the police department besides the chief of public safety? Or would we rather have a majority of seven? I would rather have a majority of seven make decisions based off of feedback from the chief of public safety. Going into the, why isn't the fire chief under the city council? Or, sorry, under the city manager? Because he's voted based off of volunteers from the city, the fire chief, or the, sorry, the fire, firetors. But that can still work if they, if he was fall under city manager. So, if the fire department is not going to fall under city manager, why should the police department? Emergency services, either way, going to fall, should fall under the city council and mayor. So, we're not talking about changing the structure of the police department. We've all, Chief Schultz is doing amazing things for the police department. No doubt about it. Over the last year, we've heard tons of people talk about how great the police department is and the great things they're doing for this community. And I'm not going to deny any of that. We have the best police officers in northeast Colorado, no doubt about it. But the structure of city council and the police department has nothing to do with the great things the police department is doing. To the public, the police department is our professionals, and they're going to present themselves as professionals. They're not going to show their low morale or any frustrations they have with the police department to the public. If you talk to the police officers, you might find out that there is low morale for a reason. Now, you guys did a poll, online poll, and less than one percent of Fort Morgan actually voted for that. But based off that, thirty-nine percent said there is a police morale problem. Thirty-nine said there isn't. So, that's not something to base your decisions off of. You can't, off of less than one percent of the public voting on an online forum, which I know why a majority of them didn't vote because they are concerned with the person in charge of it has influence over it, because you do have to register to verify that you are a resident of Fort Morgan, and who has access to that. So, that's why a lot of the people I talked to didn't vote on that online poll. We talked about continuity. The city manager provides continuity to the city council. Putting the chief of police and the police department under city council is not going to change that. That's what the chief of police is, or chief of public safety. He is the continuity between, as city council switches out. So, again, I would rather have a majority of seven make decisions based off of, for our police department and the safety of our public than one individual who has power over all departments and... Yeah, I won't go in there, but thank you for your time.
And I'm sorry, I can't read the handwriting for this first name, but the last name is Valdez. First name starts with a G.
Is there a G Valdez here? Okay, we'll move on.
Damaris Cooksey.
Good evening. I'm Damaris Cooksey. I have been on the board of One Morgan County. I'm starting my tenth year. I am also the ESL teacher at Fort Morgan Middle School. So, I've worked with our community, different members, adults and children in our community, serving on the One Morgan County Board. I've had the opportunity to work with not only Chief Schultz, but also, also, and I'm losing my mind now, the last two police chiefs were members of our board as well. So, I've had that working relationship, and I know the improvements that Chief Schultz has brought. I know that they are, they were all very professional, very wanting to outreach, wanting to make our immigrant community part of the community. One thing I want to make sure that we, we remember is that immigrant integration, all of us came from immigrants. Immigrant integration is not all about people of color. It's about all of us. We don't have a council that makes up the demographics of our community. And that's sad, but we'll get there. But as we work with, with immigrants and refugees and asylees, one thing I teach not only my kids at the middle school, but also the citizenship classes I teach to adults. And this is where I'm bringing it together. In our country, we get to vote. The people get to decide. We're not an oligarchy. We're not a monarchy. We're not anything else. We get the opportunity to decide on what's going to happen and how things should go. I, I appreciate the changes that, that Chief Schultz has brought to our community. I appreciate the opportunity and the time he's taken to serve and bring other Anglo members of our community together with, with people of color. But I also want to say, please let us vote on this. We, we, as an American, as an American public, we deserve that. And, and as people who vote for you all, we deserve that as well. Thank you very much.
Jared.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Seems like it's morning. Been here a while. I'm definitely a hundred percent opposed against changing the charter from the way it currently is. I've been a commander for the Fort Morgan Police Department for just a little over eleven years.
years. I've been on both sides of it, where there was a strong mayor, weak mayor, I guess is the actual term, and also what it is currently. So I've seen a little bit different view than everybody sitting on the council right here from an administrative function. I will never say that we don't have morale problems. We have every single time, and I guarantee we had morale problems before the change of the charter. But to say that there's some kind of correlation between morale issues and a change in the charter, foolish. Think about that just a little bit. There is not any issue that we haven't been able to deal with. It may not have been to everybody's agreeance as to how we ended up with that answer, but we're able to take care of it, whether it was the former, former governor to what it is currently. But the way it works now is much more efficient. I also spent twenty years in active duty on the military and also in the reserves. I had the ability to, or not the ability, but I had the opportunity to be able to involve in a lot of decision-making things, and this is the same concept. You can't have a rule or a governance based on a committee. It is inefficient, it doesn't work. Works in the military for the way that we're doing it here. Meaning, there is one person that you answer to, and that one person didn't have overall authority. But what they do is you get the most experienced people in the positions where they need to be, and that is the concept of what we have right now. Taking a step back to 1995 is what we're doing if we change this charter. We are going to be extremely inefficient, we are not going to get things done on a day-to-day basis as efficient as we are. Don't know why this all came about, my personal opinion, I'm speaking as a citizen, I think it's kind of personal. Whatever that reason is, don't know. But if we change it, trust me, it's going to be ineffective. Does the council have the opportunity to change that, put it on the ballot? Absolutely. But what do we do as a republic? What is best for the people? Can I come up here and say, "Well, next year I'm going to get 22 people to give me a call on the phone and say, 'We're going to take away benefits from the people on the city council, we need to put it on the ballot.'" That's foolish, you wouldn't do that. So why are we taking one situation and saying, "We have morale problems"? Simple as that, in saying, "If we change the charter, it's going to fix it." Let us fix the morale problems we have internally. That's the way it works in business, and it works much better in government as well. All of that, thank you.
That was our last speaker, Mayor. I don't know if there's anybody else who would still like the opportunity to speak that hadn't signed up? I see one hand.
You bet. Come on up. Sir, can you give us your full name?
Yes, my name is Don Schumaker. And I've been a resident of this town for something like sixty-two years now, I think. I really didn't have a speech prepared, but if I did have, it would have been exactly like Alberta, because I have the same feeling. I was on the council for some years back in the seventies and eighties. And basically, Harold was the chief of police that came in and gave us a report every meeting, and I found it very informational and very important. Keith Kredich came along and did the same thing. And I think you ladies and gentlemen would find it very interesting to get the inside story on all of the events that occur in this town. I therefore speak in favor of you getting the, getting the right back to oversee the police chief. Thank you.
Kathy?
Hi there, I'm Catherine Rule, and I'm an employee of the city. One of the things that I guess I really want to ask the mayor and you council members is even at my age, I have forgotten kind of the checks and balances of our nation. When I go to vote, I really have to remember, you know, what does the House of Representatives even do? Mainly because it's been too many years since high school. But I guess I want to maybe make an informed decision for the whole city of Fort Morgan. Now you have your council members, you have the mayor, you have the city manager. Any decision that's made within the city, as far as I know, goes through our managers. We go through the chain of command, our checks and balances, which we need. So I know that the city manager, major decisions, I do believe, go through you. He has to discuss them with you. I don't think it's a one-man decision, emotional or mental, or however it is. So I guess in order to make an informed decision whether to go to vote, I believe in the democratic system. I'll vote. Many people don't vote. But I would like to have in the paper, what is the chain of command for the city manager, for our police chief, for my manager in the office? It would be really well deserved to have that information out there so that people can make, if it comes to vote, a correct decision. Thank you.
You should have access to the chain of command.
Yeah, I have it, but just the public.
Okay, anyone else?
Only once? Twice? My turn. I want to thank everybody for coming out, giving your comments and your interest in this. I think it really comes down to a point of, from my perspective, it is a vote of the people. There's an overwhelming contingency that came tonight that wants to, as it is, there's some that have been here wanting to go to a vote of the people and change. The change would be just the chief of police would become an appointed official. It would work the same way as what the city manager does. The council, as this governing body, would oversee the chief of police. We would not have any interaction or direction in the police department. Our interaction would be with the chief of police, same as it is with the city attorney, the city manager, fire chief, or the municipal court judge. So with that, your input is valuable and respected, and I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you for coming.
We're done.